Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and we called to order this special session of the Randolph County Board of Commissioners. As you all know, last Tuesday was our regular meeting for the month of September, and tonight we're taking up some special items that sort of started with an appeal of an earlier zoning decision by the Randolph County Planning and Zoning Board, and that decision has been appealed to us, so that was the reason for setting our meeting, and then we've added some other items to our agenda. I do want to comment that Commissioner Maxine McDowell is not with us tonight. He and his wife had planned a vacation, so a few months back before we set this meeting, and so they're traveling, I think, to a play up in Pennsylvania, so they left early this morning for the week, so we have sufficient to do business tonight, and we will get started with our agenda. First agenda item is to hear the appeal of the decision made by the Randolph County Planning and Zoning Board, and Mr. Johnson, our manager, is doubling as our planning and zoning administrator, so he will introduce the issue to this board and say again to those that are on Facebook or YouTube, "We welcome you to this process," and we are live-streamed tonight as we have been recently, so thank all of you present and those that are watching from home.
Will you go ahead and see if you can roll it through? No, that's not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and tonight, the first item on the agenda is an appeal from a decision of the county planning board in a matter related to a property rezoning out on White's Memorial Road. The, I was thinking back as I looked through the minutes of this planning board meeting and also the history of this particular property. It's been thirty-five years since Randolph County began countywide zoning. I think I did my math right on that, nineteen eighty-seven, and in nineteen eighty-nine, the county issued a rezoning in nineteen eighty-nine for a small warehouse and a small office building on this property. In June of nineteen ninety-six, the county planning board issued a special use permit to allow an automotive and tractor repair shop in the existing hundred-by-hundred-and-twenty building that was on the property. The applicant was Rodney Brown, and the owner of the property back then was Joey Baker. In July twenty-eighteen, a rezoning was approved for two acres, and that's a key to this request that's coming up before the board tonight. The rezoning was approved for two acres out of a four-point-point-four-five acre site that would allow a small building manufacturing in the existing building that was on the site. This change of use of the existing building was what required the property rezoning. You keep in mind that back in ninety-six, it was rezoned for tractor repair shop, automotive and a tractor repair shop, which was a fairly common land use out in rural areas of Randolph County. Over time, the industrial use of the property began to expand to the rear of the property with what's called a parts storage manufacturing facility. This was about, this land in the rear, which was two-point-four-five acres, it remained residential agricultural, and an industrial storage yard was not permitted on the residential agricultural portion of this property. Let me see if I can get this to pull up on the map. Outlined in yellow there is the property, and you can see it's kind of, it fronts on the road, and then it goes back, kind of like an L, back there in the back, and originally, when the first part of the property was zoned, the rear portion of that property was, remained residential and agricultural, which was pretty common back in those days. Over time, the industrial use of the property began to expand to the rear of the property with parts storage, and this area was still zoned residential agricultural. With the expansion of the industry, and I believe they produce kits for various types of metal buildings, this, the planning department received complaints from the area property owners of noise and added truck traffic on small driveway, on the small driveway to the site that was not designed for the heavy trucks that were coming in. Our county code enforcement officers responded to the complaints and advised that the property owner, that the outside storage that he had on the property back in the residential agricultural area was not allowed on this part of the property. In fact, as the expansion continued over some time, I know the sheriff's office responded to several noise complaints that had been filed by adjoining property owners on this property. In July twenty-twenty-two, Rafael Vega, the applicant and the owner of the four-point-four-five acres, requested a rezoning of the entire tract that would allow construction of a new sixty-by-two-hundred building that's located to the rear of the property. The purpose of this building was to allow him to move the material that's being stored outside now into the existing building that's located onto the front of the property, and use the new building that he wants to build for expanded manufacturing purposes. Mr. Vega has approximately twenty-five full-time employees, and if the subcontractors were counted that worked with his business, the numbers would be seventy to eighty employees. There was opposition to this rezoning request at the planning board meeting, and as reflected in the minutes of the planning board. The opposition was from area citizens who expressed concern about noise, hazardous truck traffic, and the expansion of the existing industrial operations into an area of the property that was zoned residential agricultural. The county planning board, after hearing much comment during that meeting, voted unanimously to approve this request with the following conditions. First, there were no hours of operation that had ever been assigned to the business operations on this property during all those special use permit and rezoning applications starting in nineteen eighty-nine. The planning board established as a condition that the hours of operation be from seven a.m. to seven p.m. on Monday through Friday, and seven a.m. to five p.m. on Saturdays. The property owner has agreed to this. In addition to the hours of operation, the planning board required what we call a level-two buffer, and what that consists of is along the southern portion of this property where the exist, beginning where the existing building is, and that thirty-five, it's a thirty-five-foot setback from that southern property line, and it also would require the, that every, a single row of evergreen trees be installed along this property line to provide additional screening and buffer to the adjoining residence. As allowed by North Carolina law, an appeal from the decision of the planning board was filed with the county manager's office July the thirteenth, twenty-twenty-two by Alexander Williamson. Mr. Williamson states in his appeal that he and adjoining residents were not given equal opportunity by the planning board to fully represent their opposition to the impacts of this expansion in the larger manufacturing building that would be located near the adjoining residences. So, Mr. Chairman, that's a review of the requests, appeal that's before the board tonight.
Any questions from commissioners before we proceed to public hearing? All right, we will open the public hearing to hear, as part of the appeal process. Is there anyone here to speak for this project, the owner? Anything you want to say? Give us, give us your name and address.
Rafael Vega, I'm the owner, and, I mean, we agree to everything that we agreed on the last time to do, but then we heard back that he appealed it. He also has come to most of the neighborhood trying to start things up, and I talked to him one time, and he was pretty cool. He also asked me that he was needing a building, and I said, "Well, I'll help you with the building, it don't matter," and I thought everything was good, but then he started calling back again to the office saying that we're making too much noise, and then now he's working, and then he showed up to the shop on a Saturday and told them that they had to leave, and my guys called me, and I say, "Just don't say nothing, just try to keep it calm, because I didn't want to start any trouble," and, I mean, we agreed to everything that you guys say to do. I don't see why only one person wants to make a change of everything, you know, like, if it was like that, Randolph County won't be the way it is, because businesses do expand every single day. They have different requirements, and if we're going to start hearing here from a neighbor just because he don't want it, I mean, like, I don't know what to do.
But business must be good.
It is, yeah.
Most of your business come from within the county?
The what?
Most of your business comes from within the county, or your area there?
They're from here, yeah, just locally.
All right, any questions?
Is the proposed building, is, I think I read in somewhere, it's going to be open on either end?
It's going to be what?
Open, open at either end of the?
Yeah, it's going to have a door in the front and in the back.
A door, or?
Door.
Okay, well, okay, but it will be?
Enclosed.
Okay, it will be enclosed, okay, because I was envisioning?
Because that was one of the things that I agree upon, that I was going to see what I can do as far as like sealing the wall up against his property to keep the noise down, just to make everybody happy.
Right, okay, I misunderstood.
Some of this read like the ends were just completely open, like it wasn't heated or air-conditioned or whatever, I mean, just an open building kind of, with two sides and a roof.
Well, it's not going to be heated and cooled right now, I mean, like, I don't think we need it.
It's just a? It's, but it's going to be, it's going to be enclosed.
Yeah, it's going to be fully enclosed. Oh, and the other thing that we did on the front, on the entrance, I did clean up everything, so I have a wider driveway right now. Yeah, the entrance to go into the property, which is one of the things that he was complaining about, which, I don't know why he's complaining, because like my truck drivers, they never have any issue with it.
But you understand the conditions, those three conditions that were placed on you?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Sir, can you please sign in?
Anyone to speak against this request?
Thanks for holding this meeting for us.
Give us, give us your name.
My name's Alex Williamson, and I'm the resident at twenty-two fifty-nine White's Memorial Road, the property directly to the south.
And what's your name?
Alex Williamson.
Okay.
And actually have a list of adjoining properties that also requested that they would not like to see this happen, with their names, their signatures, phone numbers, and addresses, if you'd like to see it.
You can leave that with Clark.
With the opening statements, he pretty much covered everything that I wanted to mention, is that we had some concerns about the noise, the hazardous materials, the chemicals, and just the overall safety of the neighborhood. One of the biggest problems we've had for the last couple of years is extremely loud music coming from their property. We've asked countless times, I mean, that's part of what the sheriffs have probably responded to, and we've asked the owner, we've asked the workers, "Everybody, please just turn it down." It's the bass that carries really bad. It's not the treble, it's not the lyrics, the instruments, it's the bass. I mean, if I'm taking a shower, I hear thumping loud bass. I'm eating dinner, if I'm watching a movie, there was Duke Power in our yard cutting down trees with chainsaws, I could hear their music over the chainsaws. It's just the bass. And I don't see why it's so, such a big issue, not, you know, why can't you just turn the music down, you know? And it seems like it kind of comes with the property at this point, and if we're going to build another building, the existing building is about three hundred feet from my property now. The new one will be about a hundred feet from my back door, where I sleep at night. I mean, my bedroom is right there by the back door, and we have a lot of concerns about the noise and the traffic, and the hazardous chemicals, it's our property, and we're right there, we have a well, and it's like, you know. I sent some videos in about some of the noise, I'm not sure if you all saw it or reviewed it, with the extremely loud metal clanking, that's going to be a hundred feet from my back door instead of three hundred feet in front of our house. We're just going to amplify the noise, it's going to get worse and worse, and what's going to happen in ten years when they decide to move? This huge football field-sized building in our backyard, and just eroding the property value that we own, that we worked hard to get as well, you know, and I just hope that we can somehow come to some kind of conclusion with all this, that we're, everybody can be happy in some way, shape, or form, but primarily myself and the adjoining neighbors, we don't want to see this happen. When Mr. Brown was running the shop down there, he assured all the, all the adjoining properties, there wouldn't be much noise, there wouldn't be much traffic, you barely even know it was there, other than just the visual, visual representation of it, and that was true. I lived there for ten years when I was, when I first came here, and I never knew they were there. I remember one day I ran away, I ran down there, when I was a little kid, I remember, but that's besides the point. Obviously, I did go back, so, but the, it's just, it's just sad to see what's happened to our neighborhood with all this, all this noise, and we have no peace. It's seven in the morning to seven at night, we just hear super loud bass, and people screaming in our backyard, yelling, sitting on the property line, it's like, we don't have any privacy, we have no, you know, we feel like we're not safe anymore sometimes even, and I just hope we can come to some kind of resolution. I do ask, if y'all have any questions for me, I feel like last time, you know, I said what I had to say last time, and I didn't get a single question, and I hope I get at least one question out of all this, I mean, because I'm, this, I feel like it's going to affect me the most, because it is a hundred feet from my back door.
Which house, can you see this, this outline?
Yeah, the green dot directly to the south.
The green dot?
The green dot on the white?
To the south.
Directly to the south, yeah.
There's one parcel in between the applicant and?
Where that thirty-degree bend is on the property where it goes back to the southwest, that's approximately where the request location is, that's about a hundred feet from my back door. It's, I Google-mapped it, it is very, I mean, I could go out there and hit a tennis ball and hit the, hit the building where they're planning on building it.
You understand that there are required buffers between you and the proposed building?
Yeah, and I'm not sure if a tree line is really going to set back that noise, as I've represented to y'all with the videos, there's already a pretty big tree line there, and, I mean, it's awful some days. It is, the noise is so bad some days, like where my house is in between theirs, there's probably a fifty-foot span of trees and weeds where Mr. Brown hasn't maintained the property. Mr. Brown owns the property directly between us, and he hasn't upkept it at all, it's grown up all big with weeds, and that doesn't stop any of the noise at all. I don't know what, I don't think, with the exception of just be respectful of your neighbors and turn the music down, there's really no way we're going to keep the noise down. A lot of the noise that they're making with the heavy loaders, the clanking of the metal, the shouting, we can drown some of that out, but the music has got to stop. We, I mean, we've been so nice about it, like, I don't know what else we can do, I mean, it's disturbing us at this point, like.
And you understand that his hours of operation cease at seven o'clock p.m.?
Yeah.
And I think, so, and some of the comments that were made at the public hearing, that maybe sometimes that went on until even close to midnight.
Yeah, I actually have a video on my phone, it was after dark, one of the employees was up there, I think it was nine to eleven o'clock at night, I have to find the exact time, but they were, they were playing super loud music, loading in that agricultural area where they're not supposed to be in the first place, and it woke me up. I mean, I work late nights, every, I work on a swing, so every other week I work like seven a.m. to seven p.m., and the next two weeks I work nights, and it rotates, and it woke me up, you know, so, when, it's just, you know, I guess we can't force someone to be respectful of their neighborhood, but, you know, we've been, we've tried to be as good a neighbor as we can, and, you know.
We can impose some conditions on the rezoning, which has happened here, we can't, we can't, can't handle respect, I mean, that has to come from the individuals that are involved here, and hopefully they've heard and learned from this process also.
Yeah.
I'm assuming that the music is workers playing music as they work loudly, or?
It's a really loud subwoofer, I know that, it's loud bass, that's what's carrying.
Was it in a car, is it in the building?
It has to be the building, if it's someone's car, they must have fifty batteries in that thing. I mean, it is seven a.m. on the dot almost every single day, Monday through Friday, to about six or seven at night, every single day of the week, it is loud bass. I mean, like I said, I can even, even in the shower, water hitting the backs of my ears, drowning out, I couldn't even hear my wife yelling at me in the kitchen, but somehow I can still hear loud bass coming from next door, and I know it's them, because I get out, stick my head out the door, and it's the same, same rhythm, and it's coming from their property, and we've asked them to stop. I mean, it's really frustrating, honestly.
You have anything else?
Uh, that's it.
Any other questions?
And I'm looking at the plot, but you own that property that you're, you own that, it's not, it's not clear on the plat there, I think they just did the survey of the?
Yeah, I don't think it's surveyed, right? I'm sorry, I hope, I got the tax bill for it this year, so, oh, yeah.
All right, any other comments or questions? Thank you.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else here tonight who wishes to?
Mr. Williamson?
For this issue?
I live just to the north, directly beside?
Come here, give us, give us your name and address, please.
Twenty-three eleven White's Memorial Road, my name's Richard Hanyak, I'm the owner of Cedar Ridge Holdings LLC, which is what the house is, is in the business name at this time. I live directly beside the building, so I don't know if y'all have any actual, you know, drawings, like a street view of the property. If you pull in, you have a, you know, kind of like an entry door right there on the right side, and you have the actual bay doors facing the house, that's kind of sitting right there on the hill, the older house that just sold. I bought the house, and I've been there since, and I grew up in the area, I know all the Millikins, the Stephenson's, Mr. Brown, they're all of them, you know, and, you know, I didn't grow up extremely close to this one area, but nothing's changed from my point of view as far as, you know, the area since I was nineteen ninety-five-ish, since I, as far as I can remember, but I've in no way felt unsafe by, from any of the guys, just so much as coming and going, any of the employees, I've never seen anyone there after six p.m. myself. If I have, it's, it's been somebody pulling up, and I just so happen to be outside myself doing something, and they unhook a trailer and simply leave, I've never seen anyone loading, never seen anyone doing anything out of the way, and I've never heard any of the music myself, you know, so I'm not sure if there's another place on the property, which I'm sure, I'm pretty certain I would see it myself or hear it, being as I'm a lot closer than Mr. Williamson to the property, you know, but I've never heard it, maybe since everything's going on with this situation, because I thought the hearing was already kind of said and done with. I sent a letter in with Mr. Vega's employee, you know, to just state my side of it, you know, what I've seen and heard, you know, not in his defense, and I'm not against Mr. Williamson, either one of them, I mean, you know, but just from my personal experience, I don't, I don't see why it would hurt to have a building put up on the back, kind of out of sight, out of mind. There's obviously already a buffer between Mr. Vega and Mr. Williamson and Mr. Brown's property, you know, I don't know if Mr. Brown and Mr. Williamson have some kind of agreement where he uses that property back there as his own, not certain, but there's no barrier between me and the building, you know, and all the manufacturing, like, if I go outside and I'm getting something in and out of my truck, taking a piece of equipment off my trailer, I'll see the guys down there working, but it's, it's never been anything to the point where I'm like, "Oh, my God, that's just ridiculous." I've never even been startled by it, so, and I've never, I don't think I've ever noticed or witnessed anything other than just duly trucks coming and going. If it don't more duly trucks pulling out my driveway over there, I don't know, I'm sure they do, because I'm a car dealer too, I run a car business, I run a car lot over off Gold Hill, we had to go through this to get it, get it rezoned so we could park cars and stuff, you know, and talking to the neighbors, which we didn't get appealed, and understand how the process works, he can appeal it as much as he wants, as long as he wants, for whatever reason, but, you know, I don't foresee, I don't see any issue with the business, I don't see any difference in our, in the, in the area since it's been there, I mean, you know, and I don't have any against, anything against either one of the guys, but I don't really understand why we keep having these hearings, other than just the simple fact with, you know, have somebody that wants to keep appealing it and bring us out here instead of sitting home eating dinner, sitting here talking about this again, and I thought we already kind of had a barrier, you know, had the barriers in place, and, you know, because I, you know, I asked Mr. Vega when I come back in town, you know, because I run back and forth to the coast right much, but I was like, "Well, you know how things go, sorry I couldn't make it." And he said everything went good and everything was, you know, you guys gave him a set of rules or, you know, I guess what you were talking about, the buffers and, and things of that nature to, you know, put up and do, and, and he seemed just as happy as could be, and I was like, well, good man, glad it worked out, you know, and I. And I've never even asked Mr. Vega, but I use his drive all the time during business hours and after, because I cannot get it, my trailer in and out of my driveway. It just ain't going to happen. So, but I, I've never asked him, sorry if that upset you, but I use his driveway all the time. I pull in and kind of pull around, there's a service road that services the, the farmland back there, uh, that the guys pull in and come and go with. And, you know, they, I just kind of, it's just where we live at, I mean, we're just kind of, as long as we're not really stepping on each other's toes, we just kind of move around, you know? Uh, and he's been nice to me, I, I've never really had any interaction, never done any business with Mr. Vega, but the few times I've talked to him, you know, and the only reason I ever spoke to him was because I seen the hearing sign out in the yard and I was like, oh, I wonder what's going on, I didn't know what he was doing. And I'd rather Mr. Vega stay there and, and people stop contesting him because we've got Toyota coming to Liberty and they're going to be buying up all these warehouses around here to, to be putting batteries in there. I, I heard Mr. Williamson say something about hazardous waste. I've never seen anything hazardous being dumped, being used. I mean, the guys are welding and grinding here and there, you know, if I look over there, I can, I can see them grinding, but I can't even hear it. And that, and that house next door is old, so I know there's no insulation in the exterior walls, I'd hear it if anybody, it should be me complaining. I don't have any barrier at all and I don't have any complaints at all. You know, I wake up, I rise and fall with the sun anyways, so, you know, come sunrise, I'm up, moving around and I'm gone before I even see these guys come in and out most of the time. I do see them once in a while, loading up, getting out, getting their stuff and getting on down the road, but, you know, who am I to say that they're making too much noise going to work, I don't know.
So you don't have a problem with this?
Uh, not at all, no, not on, not on any level at all whatsoever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's it, that's all I have unless anyone has any questions for me.
Do I have a question?
Is that house just in the morning, I know which one's right beside the driveway?
Directly beside it.
You live and sleep there?
I live and sleep there.
Thank you.
No, but I mean, I will say that, um, there's no accounting for the way sometimes that sound carries. I mean, I know there's a house under construction out behind me and, um, I, I hear it, but, you know, it's not been, it's not been disruptive. Um, and they play music sometimes and I hear the music, but it's not that disruptive. But now the people who live further away from it than me, I guess because of the way the sound carries across the back, you know, really hear a lot of that noise. I mean, it, we know it's going to be shortly after the house will be finished and, you know, so there's not been any complaining, but there was discussion about, you know, hearing it and apparently the sound carries across there and it's, and it's worse. I also know that, um, I just earlier today had discussion with somebody about, um, some sound issues they have on their property and, um, it has nothing to do with this, but, um, the same comment was made about it being, you know, the bass that is so loud and disruptive. So I would like to think that maybe the, the buffers would help with that and then maybe just some consideration could be given. I mean, I, if music's being played while people work, I like that, I like for people to be productive when they work. And if that helps them, by all means, go for it. Um, at the same time, just a little consideration would help, so.
Well, and I, in a, in a little bit, I spoke with Mr. Vega, he, he's extremely reasonable. I'm sure if that was the only thing, is, if that's the only reason for us coming, I, I bet you he'd, he'd go buy his guys some headphones and say, hey, this is what it is. You know, you're bothering the neighbors, we've come to peace, we're not going to keep doing this back and forth stuff anymore, here's your headphones. I'm, you know, I'll buy them if it'll stop us from having to get these letters in the mail and, and drag everybody out the house at 6 o'clock in the evening. I, you know, uh, but, and, and in Mr. Vega's defense, I bring, I drag junk up out of these auctions at the car sales and, and some of the bass he may be hearing after hours is more than likely me. Because sometimes me and Rex will get over there tinkering around on these cars and, you know.
And having a good time.
Yeah, well, I guess we are, but I guess it's aggravating people, but, I mean, and I apologize, but, you know, I, if somebody ever comes up and says something, I have some, an elderly couple that lives next door and, and they're just as nice as could be to me, they've never really, they complained one time because we got a little behind them on the yard and he was like, can we mow your side of the fence because the weeds were getting up in and, they're in their 90s, you know, it's kind of, it's comical to me. And they, they weren't being ugly about it, but I was like, we'll take care of it, I was like, don't worry about it, you know? That's probably the only complaint I've got, and it wasn't even really a complaint, she was just giving me a hard time because she can, you know, so. But they're nice as could be, real nice people, uh, you know, and I, I've kind of talked to them about the situation too. And they like them being there because he keeps it lit up at night. So there's no darkness from his shop and I'm, I'm kind of the dark hole in the middle. And my elderly couple beside me, he's done mentioned it, hey, can you please get your security light turned back on? I was like, well, it's buried back in that tree, it ain't going to do us no good now, but, and I haven't called Randolph Electric and I'm a little tight, so.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it, y'all have a good night.
Anyone else who wishes to speak to this request? Hearing done, we will close the public hearing and come back before the board for action on the request, on the appeal. Can you go over the proposed, um?
Conditions.
Conditions, yeah. The rezoning application was updated to reflect the following conditions. The hours of operation from 7 AM to 7 PM, Monday through Friday, 7 AM to 5 PM on Saturdays. Level two buffers are to be installed from the rear of the existing building along the southern property line to the rear corner. So I take that all the way across. The existing driveway must be expanded 50 to 60 feet in width. That's the three conditions that the planning board and that Mr. Vegas has, has agreed to. And I think some of the comment, you know, preamble of the Constitution says we have those inalienable rights of life, liberty, and the pursuit of happiness. And I don't think Mr. Williamson sometime is real happy with all the noise and the, and the loud radios. So we can't legislate morality or respect, only, only you, the public, can do that. So, um, we hope that you can, uh, be a considerate neighbor as we go forward. So, those are, those are the three, um, conditions set forth by the planning board.
The, the, my concern was, and when I read through, it looked like it was a open-ended building.
Yeah.
And I don't know if that needs to be a condi, because, you know, if it's an enclosed building.
I read that same thing and that, that was definitely the impression I got was it, it's basically two sides and a roof, but.
Yeah.
That's not, that's not what Mr. Vega is saying.
Is, is that a condition that we need to make sure or is that just kind of a given?
Um, we can, if, if miss, if he, he says that's what he's got and if he agrees to it, we can make that a fourth condition that it, that is a four-sided building.
Yeah, as, as long as, I mean, doors for access and that kind of thing, that's not a problem. But I, I was envisioning just a, a, like a pole building.
Slow it down.
And, um.
Correct.
Because I think that would contain at least, uh, some of the noise, if he's putting the material at the existing location and manufacturing in the, in the new location, that should contain, uh, at least a good bit of the noise as far as.
Yes.
Sawing and, um, grinding, that kind of thing.
Would you agree to that, Mr. Vega? That it's a four-sided enclosed building? All right, we will, when we make a motion, we will include that. Uh, well, it says, uh, if the motion is to approve, uh, it says, and all agreed upon revisions.
That would be a.
Yes.
Brief one, okay.
Yes.
The, the three conditions right now are already a part of the application.
Yes.
And the new one that you're imposing will be an additional condition, the applicant has indicated his consent to that.
Yep.
And so if that's the motion you choose to make, you can do that or you can add more conditions, whatever, whatever you want.
But would this, would this language include the, the fourth condition that we're just, that we're talking about?
Um.
It says.
Well, you'll, you'll need to add, you'll, you'll need to add some language, you'll, you need to say in addition to the.
Four-sided.
The, the four-sided, the enclosed, the enclosed building, yes. Because that's not a part of the application right now.
All right. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make the motion, we approve this rezoning request to rezone the specified parcels on the rezoning application and map, uh, map amendment ordinance. The request is zoning district based on the determination and consistent findings of realness and public interest statements that are included in the planning board agenda submitted during the rezoning presentation and as amended incorporated into motion to be included in the minutes as well as any site, as the site plans with, uh, any inaugurated upon revisions, which would include a four-sided enclosed building. Also incorporated in the motion that the request is consistent with the Randolph County Growth Management Plan.
Do I have a second to that motion? Is there a second or have to read all this?
No.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion or questions relative to that?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Vega will need to sign his application that it shows he's in agreement with that condition.
All right.
And that's what our county enforcement officer is doing right now.
All right.
Hal, what exactly are your qualifications for this?
20 years.
I wish.
More than 20.
More than 20, yeah.
Are we good? Are we good? All right, any other discussion or questions? Those in favor will say aye, aye, oppose no, and the appeal is denied and the motion to approve going forward is set forth. Thank all of you for your participation tonight. Okay, um, our next item is, uh, a discussion item on the Master Water and Sewer Plan update by John Gray with the Wooten Company. And John, you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to try to make this as smooth and painless as possible. There's a lot of information, uh, that we have accumulated through this process. Um, and so what this report or presentation tonight is based on is a draft of the report. We actually haven't even sent the draft of the report in. Um, but I wanted to go ahead and do this presentation to try to get some feedback from y'all if we were needing to do further investigation on any parts of this, uh, study or if you felt like this was covering what the desire of the county is. So our project scope was laid out in our agreement and those are these items here. Evaluation of the water and sewer to CAM site, that was sort of thrown in as we were pulled into that discussion as it was pretty hot and heavy. Um, and it's resulted in a, a nice, uh, project. Develop the project layout and rough cost opinions for other projects that were determined to be necessary through the process of meeting with municipalities and water system owners. Uh, develop a matrix to help the county evaluate and prioritize all the projects. So that's the ones that were submitted initially, as well as the ones that were developed through the process of meeting with the municipalities. Review other possible funding sources for projects, review needed capacities to support those, these projects and review the overall water and sewer coordination between systems in the county and then to provide the report. So the first item from that is item A is evaluating the water and sewer for CAM site. And as you know, that's been pretty much done. It was just some general, uh, big picture calculations that were done for rough water line sizing and lengths and how it might, could flow from where to where. So that included a water line from Piedmont Triad Regional Water Authority System to the city of Ashboro, water line from the city of Ashboro within city of Ashboro to try to pick up appropriate point in the system that would pull the flow from Ashboro to the east, paralleling their existing system.
That, that, that's my question right from the get-go. So whose water's coming down that water line?
That is still to be negotiated out, but, uh, a portion will have to be purchased from Piedmont Triad, um, somehow. So Randolph County.
It'll have to be purchased from the people that own the water.
Right.
Not the water authority.
Right, the county would have to sell the water.
Yes.
Increase your, well, it depends on how much we're looking, talking about. If we're talking about 2 million gallons being, uh, purchased by the county and sold to Ashboro, you may need two and a half. I mean, those numbers are still to be agreed to between the city of Ashboro and the, what's desired for the end use. The, the CAM site initial request was 6 million gallons for the Phase Two project. And so the lines were sized, rough sized, uh, based on that flow. Uh, Ashboro initially said 4 million gallons is what they're willing to put in. Ramsewer can produce another 1 million gallons, so that would mean at least, uh, another one from the Piedmont Triad, which would essentially be, as you said, from the county. Um, and then likely the need for additional water in the system, and we actually talk about that a little bit as we get through there, but.
Is, is that treated water coming from?
Yes, sir. That would be treated water. Uh, and then the, the line would go all the way through Ramsewer and extend to Chatham County. Um, the sewer plan, uh, as we talk about further in the report, we think that Ramsewer is in a good position for a regional sewer treatment plant. And they could take, uh, flow from the CAM site, they could take flow from Highway 49 corridor, Highway 64 corridor, uh, as needed. So that's still being worked out as far as what capacity is available. And I can talk more about that if you want me to, but I wanted to go ahead and get on through this presentation. So, uh, developing the project layouts, the, the red squares on the county map there show the different locations of all the projects that were being considered. And then this is a typical map that we developed based on the projects. This just happens to be the water line going from Ramsewer to Chatham County. Uh, you can see the colored properties, those represent what was considered to be affected by the line. Now, obviously, there's potentially a lot more that could be affected by it. We went basically 500 feet from the line and, uh, just brought in those properties into the calculation and we did it through a GIS database and query process to look at the different types of properties that were affected by the lines of the projects. And then we developed a cost opinion for, for those lines. This one, uh, again, is for the water line east of Ramsewer, which shows two cost opinions. One is if it, the CAM site did move forward using the larger diameter water lines, 24 and 30 inch water lines. And, uh, without the CAM site, probably get by with a 12 and 8 inch, so another cost opinion for that and so.
Yeah, but on the one for the CAM site?
Yes, sir.
Is that part of the 55 million that Ashboro got from the state?
Yes, sir, these numbers were used in calculating that 55 million. So then this is the layout of all the projects and cost opinions, uh, that were considered. You can see there just a summary of the rough cost opinions that were developed for each of the projects. There's a project description, um, I'm not going to go through each of these at this time, but that will be in the report. Um, but there were projects for most of the municipalities in the county. Randallman, when we met with them, they did not have a list and I don't know if they've made contact with the county in, since the meeting, but, um, they, they do not have anything in this. So then with that list of projects, it's like, which one do we do first? Do you start with the cheapest one and go up or do you, most expensive one, work your way down? Or, we thought it would be worthwhile to develop a matrix to consider these projects by. And so the, I, these items are the things that were considered, how many parcels are affected? Now, some parcels may be one acre, some parcels may be 500 acres. And these, again, if they're within. And these, again, if they're within that five hundred feet, that whole parcel is brought into the consideration. So then the acres affected, uh, becomes that part of it. Then there's the number of residents benefiting, uh, the economic development benefit. If it looks like the area would be good for industrial growth, if there's already talk about industrial growth, that, that was considered and weighted. And then if it's an economically distressed area benefits. So that's something that the state has recently created a North Carolina Communities Map. And it has this purple shading of areas that based on census numbers that are considered distressed or disadvantaged areas. And so that actually will help those projects potentially receive funding from the state if, if they have those areas in them. So we took that into account. The number of towns or municipalities benefiting from the project. So if it's a project that connected two municipalities, that was a two. If it connected three, that was a three. If it's just one, then it's just one. So, uh, that was part of the matrix. If it was beneficial for commercial or industrial zoned land, so again, looking at the property that's affected by the project, is any of it already zoned for industrial use? Other potential funding sources, we did a real quick look to see the type of project is, where it might could get some other funding and threw that into the matrix. And then we also worked with the county, uh, GIS people to come up with a map showing the poor wells or septic tanks that would benefit from a project. And that was factored in as well. So this was initially circulated and the county did a quick review with staff and seemed to be, uh, a good area, a good way to rank, rate these projects. One thing that we did realize is when we compared the original requests with the projects that were developed from our meetings, the original requests, a lot of those were maintenance types projects. So need to replace this pumps or this force main or repla, rehab sewer lines or things like that. And so those were considered maintenance type of projects. We really couldn't score those on the same way because, uh, it didn't affect new customers. They're already on the line. So, uh, those were rated differently and so we created just a modified matrix for the maintenance type projects. So based on that maintenance projects, these, this is the requests that were submitted. Uh, you can see four from Ramsewer, one from Franklinville, and then that's how they scored out, uh, based on the properties that they affect, the number of customers that they affect and things like that. And we can discuss that further if you'd like.
The, the score is, are the scores weighted in any way or is it just a flat number?
So what we did is I looked at the high number and the low number and I created a zero to five, uh, based on those numbers and just put e, even increments between them. And then wherever these projects fail, that's what score they got, added up all the points. And that is, that, that's how we developed the score. But it was, it was weighted based on, uh, the, the factors that were presented before. The, the number of, uh, parcels and we looked at all the variance in that and then said, okay, well, if it's between one and ten, it gets one point.
Okay.
Something like that. So that is, that is how we developed the total score. And that, that'll be laid out in the full report. But this one is, it's, uh, that main pump station for Ramsewer serves eighty percent of the town. And so you can see that that's a, that's gonna affect a lot of properties, a lot of property owners, so that has a bigger effect. Ogles Creek Pump Station affects, uh, a lot of Franklinville Sewer. They get that whole, uh, trailer park that pumps over and that's, that's a big portion of their sewer system. So that, that gave them more points. And then you can sort of see the smaller projects did not get as much. So then we, uh, looked at the rest of the projects that had been submitted. And I will say at this point that, um, Franklinville submitted four projects. One was, uh, Meter Vault, one was a Highway sixty-four water line, one was a Cedar Falls water line, and then one was Ogles Pump Station. And, uh, when we started in the process, we had the meeting with Franklinville that was indicated that their top priority was to get the water along Highway sixty-four. And they didn't want those projects competing against each other, so they said, we really want that one, so don't, don't worry about this other one on Cedar Falls Road. Well, now that this water line on Ha, Highway sixty-four is probably gonna come through with this water line from Ashboro, uh, Franklinville is now saying, well, you know, we really would like you to bring that project back into the mix. Well, I, I found that out Friday, so I didn't have time to really adjust here. I will make that adjustment in the final report. I'll have to create a map for that project, score it and see where it falls out, uh, but I will add it to this list. The yellow highlighted projects are the ones that would be covered by the funding that City of Ashboro is receiving from the state. So it covers three of the big projects. The other thing I wanted to point out is the price beside the Franklinville water line. It was calling for a twelve inch loop. That line's actually gonna be a twenty-four inch now and a lot more expensive. Uh, the number represented there is just what their request was. What was included in the Ashboro total numbers was the twenty-four inch line, the larger line. So that, that gets through all those projects and the maintenance projects. But one thing I did look at, as I said, well, you know, if it's a really long line, it affects a whole lot of properties, it's, gets a really big score. Is that really fair to say that that's more of an important project than a smaller project that's affecting a, a valuable area? So I tried to look at a way that we could con, consider that. And so what I did is I took the total score and I took the beneficial length. And the beneficial length is the length that a service could be connected to. So for a water line, it's the full length of the water line. For a sewer project, you've got a sewer pump station that where you could receive services. But the force main is taking the flow from the pump station to the discharge point. Usually you don't tap into that with services. And so I didn't consider that length of force main. But if there's a gravity line associated with it, then that's beneficial in that it can receive services. So that's the mentality I used. And then I took that beneficial length and divided it by a thousand and then I used that to modify those scores. And the results of that were fairly similar, but you can see, so there's, I still have the total score listed there and then I have the modified score beside it. Uh, you can see those numbers are a little bit closer together. The total scores were a lot further apart, but that's just because that helped bring down some of the differences between the projects. And by doing that, uh, it did shift some of them around, uh, so I'm not sure how the county's gonna wanna consider that, but I think it's something to, to think about is, uh, you know, what is the more beneficial project? And my, my goal was to try to give you a tool that you could use in making your decisions on which ones to fund.
So who, who would, who would actually sell the water? Do they sell the water to, uh, client or do they sell it to Siler City?
You're talking about the CAM water?
Yeah.
I am not sure exactly who the customer will be. The way I, I am seeing this working is that Piedmont Triad or the county would be selling the water to Ashboro. Ashboro would be selling the water, Franklinville, Franklinville be selling the water to Ramsewer. Ramsewer would be selling the water to Chatham County, Siler City, CAM, whoever it is that's that end user. And I'm not sure that, of, of that designation, but that's sort of how I see it working. And it's, it, so it's definitely gonna take, one of the last things that we're asked to do is to consider, you know, how do these systems work together to make this work? And, uh, I think there's some other things that are in place to help that happen, but, uh, I, yeah, that, one of the challenges is the county is not wanting to be in the water sewer business. And so you wanna support the extension of water and sewer along major corridors, so you wanna support that growth, but you don't wanna get in the business and have to have operators and all of, all of that. So I think the way this works is these existing systems are just gonna be extending their service areas with help from y'all in that possibility. And then that supports the growth in those corridors. So looking at other possible funding sources, I just listed yes, no, or possibly. And the no's are maybe you could get a loan, you probably could get a loan from somewhere, uh, maybe USDA. But generally, when I looked at it, it was like, eh, it's not a real economically challenged area. It's not a lot on there. Like the line from Piedmont Triad to Ashboro, I mean, there's hardly anything in that area. So, um, that's not gonna be funded easily, but it actually is funded now. But, uh, those are the way, those are the things I considered in this list. And then the needed capacities to support the projects. And so this is where we get a little bit of a crystal ball action going. And, uh, so I, I mentioned the affected parcels. So this project runs out sixty-four. How, how much property is really gonna hook onto that water line? And it's, it's really a, I mean, we try to use reasonable judgment, I guess is the best way to say it. But, uh, there's, uh, we actually did look at the, um, structures that were there as well as the vacant land. And on the water line, we said ten percent of the vacant land would be added. And then on sewer, we said twenty percent because we feel if sewer's available, you're gonna get more development. So considering all that and then using a, a standard of water demand of a hundred and twenty gallons per, uh, person, then we were able to develop, I think it was actually a hundred and twenty gallons per acre or a half acre, something to that effect. I don't remember that number, I'm sorry. But we were able to come up with these flows that would be generated or required by the various projects. Now that Ramsewer Highway sixty-four water line, that's got six million gallons in there for the CAM site. And then the other projects are generally just what was looked at based on the property that was affected by the, the, the lines. And the sewer side, we've got four million gallons called out there because Siler City, Chatham County has requested four million gallons of capacity in Ramsewer Treatment Plant. If it's, if it proceeds. So you can see these total numbers there, seven point one million for water and four point four, four point five for sewer. We also looked at population projections and we considered the historical, uh, growth for each of the communities. And then we tried to factor in an influence from the Toyota plant. I mean, this is, that's a, we don't have, that happened very often and so it's gonna be a big factor in the population of Randolph County moving forward. We were able to find some, some data that gave us a guideline that for every job created, it increases population by two point five people. And so based on the seventeen hundred jobs, which I know it's more than that now, but based on the seventeen hundred that was presented, we felt like it would increase forty-five hundred, uh, people to the population, just that event, along with the historical growth. And so we took those and sort of worked them together to come up with a growth. We also tried to apply where this growth may occur and that is purely, uh, crystal ball guessing game. But we felt like it was necessary because if, if all this growth happens in Liberty, Liberty's gotta figure out a way to get new water. They gotta figure out a way to get this rid of sewer. And so we tried to, uh, associate it with some of that ba, based on being close to the industrial site. And then some of it, Ashboro, you know, being a big community has a lot of, uh, support for growth and so they'll see some growth. So we, we put factors in there to try to spread that additional growth from the, uh, industrial plant to each of the communities. And so we were able to come up from that and project a flow, uh, associated flow per person. And that helped us develop a flow and demand for twenty forty based on that. So those results are here and, um, you certainly can study those population projections and poke holes in it very easily. And I would be willing to take any kind of expert opinion that you wanna give on that and we can adjust those flow numbers accordingly. But those were how we saw it coming down and, I mean, I could spend an hour just talking about that one slide, uh, and all the data that goes into that. But based on that, uh, increase in flow and the increase in flow from the projects that we've talked about, we're looking at a eight point eight million gallon increase in water use in the county and a six point three million gallon increase in sewer, uh, in the county. And that's with the CAM numbers at phase two of CAM. So I've thrown a lot at you and now here comes the busiest slide I've got. So these are things to talk about in coordinating between systems. Coordinating between Piedmont Triad and the county and the City of Ashboro, how's that water gonna go? How's it gonna get there? But one thing, uh, Paxton and I found out when we were meeting with Piedmont Triad is they are going through a contaminants, uh, treatment process improvement, which is potentially fifty million dollars. And the county will have a portion of that by your membership based on what you, what you've been assigned. So that's something that, you know, needs to be considered when you're thinking about how to spend this money. That's, that's something that's coming. But they're also looking at an expansion, trying to figure out how much, uh, flow the county needs is really probably something that needs to happen within the next two or three months. I threw out some rough numbers, but, uh, those are throughout the county. How much of that's gonna be the county purchasing from Piedmont Triad? How much do you need to increase that allocation? So those are things that need to be thought through. Randleman, uh, will need to increase their purchase of water. Will this, they'll be, will they be purchasing that from y'all or is there gonna be a way for them to get it from Piedmont Triad? Providing water to the CAM site, that's gonna require agreement between all those agent groups. And my understanding is that's being worked on. Possible increase in sewer capacity in eastern part of the county. I've mentioned, uh, Ramsewer could be a regional system, uh, to serve all of the eastern part of Randolph County. Franklinville does have a plant that's, uh, I think currently rated point two MGD, can be expanded to point three. But I think it's, it's sort of landlocked, so it's probably the most they get. They might could do some expansion beyond that. But Ramsewer has a large chunk of land where their wastewater treatment plant is now that could house a much larger plant. And they're right there on the Deep River for discharge, so that works well, uh, for that. But that's something that's still gotta be coordinated. And then Liberty, um, did not really talk about them a whole lot, but increasing their water demand based on the, the tables I had earlier of, uh, point two six MGD and sewer of point four eight. And that's just based on the projects and some population growth. So.
That number four?
Yes, sir.
Number I heard for that was about two hundred million dollars.
For the, yes, sir.
Six million, six million.
It could be anywhere from a hundred and eighty to two hundred and forty, depending on what kind of treatment process is required. And, and that money, so my understanding is the potential for this, and I guess I'm, I hope I'm not revealing any process, but the Siler City is taking the initial flow and their hope is that Ramsewer will be able to expand their plant and take expansion of the CAM site as well, potential other use that may be coming to that CAM site. As well as, you know, they would have to expand pretty substantially anyway just to serve the county needs on sixty-four and forty-nine.
And on this, the Highway sixty-four water line to Chatham County, six point three million, that's Ashboro's water.
That's, uh, flow or is that a cost?
Well, it's water flow demand, six point, six million, three hundred fifty-five thousand, one hundred thirteen gallons.
Yes.
That's Highway sixty-four water line to Chatham County.
Yes, sir.
So how much is Ashboro treating now? About four?
Um, yes, sir. I think that's right, four, four and a half.
So they're gonna have ten million gallons of treated water, which they don't have.
That's.
Right.
That's not all, that's four.
That's not all from them. That's a million gallons from Ramsewer. And that's, uh, assuming that Ashboro can purchase a million or two million or some portion from Randolph County to send that way as well. So that, that will have to be in agreement to get that kind of flow. I don't, I mean, Ashboro might could do it themselves, but I think they would much rather, uh, purchase some of the, the water that the counties are.
They couldn't do it without major upgrades to their treatment plant.
Yeah, the, the treatment plant's rated as twelve, um, but usually you don't wanna get over the eighty percent capacity. So I mean, a, a nine MGD is probably as high as they really would wanna go. They could go ten, but then they gotta be looking at expansion.
I mean, just, just for the board, just and for the public, but, um, all we, all Randolph County has right now is about after we, after. about, after we provide some water to the I-74 Industrial Park, which I'm, here's 500,000 gallons, we only have about 750,000 gallons of treated water available today.
That's correct.
And it could be two, two and a half years before more would be ready.
Right, from, that's correct. Right. And I think it's 20, I don't remember the dates exactly, but 2027, I think, before they would be, maybe even 2029, before they need the 6 MGD at the CAM site. Initially, they're looking at three, three MGD of water and one MGD of sewer. Those are just the numbers that come to my head. And then the Phase 2 is where it kicks up to that higher, those higher numbers. But yeah, I think there's definitely a need for the county to see, Ashborough probably needs to come to the county and say, "We would like to buy however much water they want to buy to send through this system from y'all." But to do that, you probably will have to increase your allocation.
Yeah, we would.
And so then there's the money that's associated with those types of discussions. So the last slide I have is just talking about coordination between the systems. I did want to point out, and I put this in my report, this is a water district, water sewer district map that was developed back in 2008, 2000, somewhere in there. And there is already formed an eastern Randolph Water and Sewer District. And so I think the, y'all did a good job at setting that up. So now we just need to get the parties to work together to figure out how to populate that and govern it. And that's going to be one of the biggest hurdles in getting the water to that, through the county, to that site. But also to encourage Franklinville and Ramsour on how they're going to work together with the water from Ashborough, and then bringing Liberty into discussion as well, because they're going to be pushing their limits in the future, especially if the growth occurs as we think it will. All right, I didn't go on an hour and a half, but it was a little longer than I wanted. But hopefully.
I've already asked.
Yes. There's, as I said, there's a lot of information in there, and we really could talk about several components of this, especially that population projection and the flow projection that goes along with it. We could talk about that for a lot more time, but we'll put that in our report. So the main question I have for you, I will answer your questions, but you know, does this seem to answer the questions that you want? Or is there some other question that you have that you think this report needs to provide an answer to?
We don't know yet, at least until we kind of study.
Yes, sir.
I mean, that's, you hadn't put out about 300,000 numbers there.
Yes, sir.
There's a lot, there's a lot of questions here that I don't think either one of us right now is able to answer.
Right.
Because we weren't at the table when some of these decisions were made.
I understand.
I mean, not at all.
Right.
But we had, we've had the district for, she, probably close to 20 years. We had these districts drawn up a long time ago.
Yeah, and it's my hope that this can help those communities work together.
Sure.
In serving those, I mean, that 64 corridor is just critical for development on both sides of Ramsour. And the Highway 49 corridor between Ramsour and Liberty, I mean, that would be great for development, but we've got to get Liberty and Ramsour working together on that.
I think with that being the CAM site, that's one question that's kind of answered.
Yes.
But it also creates fifty more. But I think it does indicate that the eastern side of the county is going to be the key area. And fortunately, if there's enough funding there, that's, a good portion of that's funded.
Right.
But there are other branches of water and sewer, like up to Liberty and on 49, those that, but I think that's the area that the need's going to be.
In the discussions with the municipalities.
I'd have to figure that out either, but.
Now, Archdale, I don't want to leave them out. They've, they're certainly seeing growth up that way as well. But generally, the biggest change, I think, is going to be on the eastern side of Randolph County.
But I do think the state is revisiting their look at participating in that sewer plan, Ramsour.
Yeah, so just to give you a little more information on that, a letter of speculative limits was submitted to the state, and that's the first step when you want to increase the amount of flow you discharge. And they came back and said, basically, "Not a big deal. 6 million gallons, okay." But then they quickly came back and said, "Well, wait a minute. This area is actually being studied, and this portion of the Deep River is in a study area, therefore, we're freezing the discharge limits of certain components." And that would very much limit the size that could be built. And so we're, we've posed some questions back, and we're going to have to have some back and forth on that to settle on how that works out. But the initial thought was six was not going to be a problem. So we're hoping that we can work our way to that. Siler City is, my understanding is they're expanding their wastewater treatment plant to a 6 MGD as well, and their discharge is into a small creek as opposed to the Deep River. So surely, we should be able to do that.
Yeah, that was a question, how much can they discharge of what they have?
Mm-hmm. So I understand it's a lot of information, so just work your way back to me. You can call me directly if you'd like, or through Paxton or Hal. I'd be happy to address any questions. I'm going to work on finalizing the report a little bit more, but I'll wait a week or two before I finish it up completely. And then I'll submit a draft of the written report that you can dive through as well.
Other questions? Thank you, John.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay, Paxton, you want to bring us up to date on Seagrove Ula?
Good evening. Last, last week, I came to you and gave you an update on the Seagrove Ula wastewater treatment plan and some of the issues there. And one of the recommendations I had was for some maintenance and repairs of the existing system that's currently operating. And so I just wanted to come back tonight to sort of get your feedback on that and then see if you're okay with moving forward with that and go ahead and authorize that work to get started.
Have you heard any more about the flow today?
No. No, we just, I guess we need to wait and see what, where those numbers go.
So this includes everything you were talking about the other night, the various pumps?
Yeah, this is the equipment that's currently working. This is not the old food processing equipment that's offline.
Bring up the, I can't remember the number of gallons, 40, well, 40% or whatever it was.
Yeah, this is the 30,000 gallon capacity equipment. And yes, I think you have the numbers in front of you there, it's 35,000, I think about $400.
Yes.
And there could be something as we get into it of needs that are, that come up. One thing was wanting to smoke the lines down there. That's not really in the engineer's contract right now. We've got some rainwater getting into the system, and that could also be an expense. But for right now, these are the items we've identified and want to go ahead and get them repaired, make sure that that plant lasts us through the next two years.
And we're planning on using that, part of that $100,000 from the state to help pay for those repairs. But we don't have that money in hand yet.
No, not yet. I think we'll have found it.
We could take care of it.
Found a temporary.
I think it'd be here shortly, but that shouldn't stop us from when we're ready to do the work.
No.
I think y'all remember, the truck stop said they could wait till 2024. But depending on the outcome of this latest number of flow, we should be able to take care of the school and 10 houses in the pine wood development.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yes, based off of the 22,000 gallons a day.
Right.
We still have not got word back from the state. They were, we were supposed to have heard back from them by now about their approval of that flow reduction, and we haven't. I know the school is asking that question, and our, Bill Lester's reached out to the state to get an answer, but we still have not heard that. But they were, they seemed on board with it whenever it was presented.
I talked to the superintendent this afternoon. She came by the county building, and they were expecting an answer from the state Friday, and they didn't get it. Do you know when it might be coming?
No, he had actually told us they would, the state told us they would have an answer by the ninth, and we still haven't heard it.
But we don't have it.
And he was actually going on vacation on the night. That's why he was going to get it to us. And so now, when the engineer had emailed him, he was getting a out-of-office reply. So, you know, it may be a couple of days if no one else, if he's not checking his emails.
Anything else? Appreciate it.
We're good with the, moving forward on the maintenance repairs?
Larry, anything you want to say on this matter? Thank you. Okay.
All right, thanks.
Thank you, Paxton.
All right, we, we need to go into closed session at this time with Kevin Franklin, EDC, and we probably will have a decision, a board action when we come out. I don't think this will take very long. It involves the I-74 Industrial Park and a pump station up there. So do I have a motion to go into closed session?
I move we go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318.11A5, establish or instruct the public's bodies, staff, or negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken out on behalf of the public body negotiating the price or other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Or any question or discussion? Those in favor will say aye.
Aye.
Aye and opposed, no. We are in closed session, and Paxton, I think you're going to join us. And Kevin?
Yeah, we're going to go back to here since we're going, since we're not going to have action to come out.
And I guess, Kevin, maybe, I mean, when I say we won't have action, I don't think we'll be able to vote to buy this property because, until seller actually agrees to accept our offer.
Right, and we don't, we don't have a, I mean, there's, we've talked about the price, but we don't have a firm conclusion on what.